United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Watson. On the agenda this evening is a presentation to recognize February being 2023 being National Career and Technical Education Month. I'm going to turn this over to you, Ms. Mandy Melton. Thank you.
Did I get it out? There we go, okay. Good evening, members of the board. February is Career and Technical Education Month. The mission of CTE is to empower all students to be successful citizens, workers, and leaders in a global economy. CTE gives purpose to learning by emphasizing real-world skills and practical knowledge. Programs in CTE are designed to contribute to the broad educational achievement of students, including putting into practice skills such as reading, writing, mathematics, as well as their ability to work independently and part of a team. Think creatively, solve problems, and utilize technology. These tools and experiences make school more relevant and ensure that students are ready for the real world. Whether students plan to further their education in community colleges, technical schools, four-year colleges, and universities, receive on-the-job training, or pursue careers in the military, CTE can be the first step in a pathway towards productive employment and citizenship. I would like to share with you the highlights of our program. Workplace credentials is an important focus in CTE. Students can leave high school with an industry-recognized credential showing they are college and career-ready. Last school year, CTE students with the help of this staff earned 3,345 workplace credentials, and this fall, the total number of credentials earned is already at 1,513. Another focus of CTE is internships, advanced studies, and apprenticeships, which help connect students with local businesses and industries, allowing students on-the-job experience. Last school year, 65 students participated in these opportunities. Fifty-two students have also completed internships and advanced studies programs this fall, and thirty are currently enrolled for this semester. We also have five students who are enrolled in our auto and early childhood apprenticeship programs. We are also in the process of organizing our very first countywide job shadow days that will allow students to shadow in careers they're interested in. Career and Technical Education student associations have not been able to function as normal in the past few years. Still, we are proud that all four high schools currently have a Skills USA and National Technical Honor Society chapters, and three of our high schools have very active FFA chapters with a new middle school chapter of FFA coming on this year. These associations are under the leadership of CTE teachers. Also, we are very proud that our teachers are leaders in the state. Many teachers have served on curriculum committees to develop statewide curriculums and assessment and presented at statewide conferences. Usually, these teachers like to take a step back and showcase their students, but tonight, I would like to recognize these teachers for the impact they have on our students. Just face this direction. I would like to recognize our CTE department: twenty-eight high school teachers, four middle school teachers, four career development coordinators, and one instructional management coordinator. Thank you.
Do you want to picture?
Okay, got a pose perfect?
Come on, guys.
Get back.
Yeah, we're up here.
Give us all a share.
Yes.
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 Friendly.
Very friendly. Yes. If you can see me, I'll get to you. Can you come up to the front? You're a little short right here on the end. Yeah. Okay, there we go. I think we have it now. Thank you very much.
Will y'all please stay up here, please? Will you please? You know me, I always ask the board, we want to come around and shake your hands. Ms. Melton, we got everybody here from like every high school?
Every high school.
Is represented?
Every high school is represented. Two middle schools.
Okay, okay. Well, let's go, board members. If y'all will stay right there, we want to come around and...
Straight lines.
Straight line.
Come on, guys.
They're crossing around. I'm going to speak on behalf of these guys, and the CTE department would like to thank the board for recognizing their importance in always supporting career and technical education. We really appreciate your support. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Melton, and thank all of you again. Thank you so much. At this time, board members, I would like to ask for a motion to go into closed session for Personnel Matters, North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11A6; Student Matters, North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11A1; Attorney/Client Matters, North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11A3. May I have a motion, please?
Make a motion and go into closed session.
A motion by Ms. Poplin, a second. Second by Ms. Watson. All in favor, say aye? Any post no? Okay, the board is now in closed session.
At this time, I would like to call the board back into open session. Once again, welcome to all of you that are in attendance, those that may be joining us via live streaming. We appreciate you being here. I believe that next, we have recognitions at this time. Dr. Dennis, I'm going to turn this over to you.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. I'm going to turn this over to Ms. Rolls.
Good evening, Madam Chairperson, members of the board and guests. Thank you for the opportunity to present this evening. National Board Certification, offered by the National Board for Professional Teaching Standards, was designed to develop, retain, and recognize accomplished teachers, and to generate ongoing improvement in schools nationwide. The certification process is based on high and rigorous standards that evaluate teaching practice through performance-based assessments. The ultimate result is improved performance and achievement for North Carolina students. We currently have 54 National Board Certified Teachers serving the students of Stanley County. The National Board's Maintenance of Certification process is the pathway for current National Board Certified Teachers to keep their certification active. It is designed based on best assessment practices, and by teachers to ensure that National Board Certified Teachers continue to grow professionally while maintaining a strong impact on student learning. Stanley County Schools would like to recognize the following educators who have successfully completed the Maintenance of Certification process. This time, we will recognize Emily Bowers. Heather Jones. Pamela Hyatt. And Lauren Malden. Congratulations, and we appreciate your dedication to the profession and to the students in our district.
Thank you.
Thank you, congratulations.
We do not want them to leave, if possible. Do we have other recognitions?
I have to do my Stanley Star, our Stanley Stars, and then that'll be it. You want to do a picture all at the same time?
I do, I'd like to have a picture all at the same time, if they wouldn't mind waiting till we do this final recognition.
Yeah, it won't take me a minute. That is one thing I'd always wish I had done, but I never did, was get my National Board Certification. I know it's very rigorous as far as getting those credentials, so congratulations again. Next, I'm going to bring up Ms. Wood, and we're going to recognize our Stanley Stars for January.
Right, good evening. Each month, Stanley County Schools will recognize two classified employees and two certified employees through the Stanley Star Award Program. This month, these employees were nominated by the Principals at Baden Elementary School and Endy Elementary School. Employees were surprised at their respective schools by a visit from Dr. Dennis and were provided with a $25 gift card sponsored by the Nehemiah Project. We thank the Nehemiah Project for their generous donation of $1,500 to cover all of our awards this year. As I call your name, please step forward to accept your certificate. From Baden Elementary, the certified staff member is Emily Booth. Ms. Booth is in her 25th year of teaching. This year is her 13th year at Baden Elementary. She is a teacher who is always willing to take on a challenge, whether those challenges pertain to curriculum or professional development, or students who need extra love and support. She faces them head-on and with a positive attitude. Mrs. Booth is an excellent mentor and leader to her peers. She's a teacher that is a lifelong learner and continuously implements new and best practices in her classroom. She is always the first one to enter our building in the morning, and one of the last ones to leave at the end of the day. Thank you, Ms. Booth. Right, our classified staff member from Baden Elementary is Debbie Blake. Mrs. Blake has been at Baden Elementary as a teacher assistant for 22 years. You can ask anyone who has been a student or parent at Baden, and they will tell you how much they love Mrs. Blake. She always goes above and beyond the call of duty. She volunteered to get trained in the Intensive Reading Intervention Program called Hill Rap, and has shown great success in her work. Her passion for interventions, teaching, and learning is evident when you walk in a room as it is full of anchor charts and positive words to motivate her students to become better readers and mathematicians. A large part of Baden's positive growth is due to Mrs. Blake. Thank you, Mrs. Blake. From Endy Elementary School, the certified staff member is Jean Rice. Mrs. Rice has been teaching for 36 years, and has been at Endy for the last 29 of those years. She continues to go above and beyond each and every day, whether she is dressed up as Granny on the 100th Day of School, or Mrs. Claus on Christmas. She brings joy and excitement to the school and the students. She is extremely knowledgeable of the curriculum and has a toolbox full of instructional strategies to reach students. She prioritizes relationships with students and continues to lead extracurricular opportunities for students such as student council. Mrs. Rice is a phenomenal educator and a model for educators. Thank you, Mrs. Rice, for your service. And the classified nomination for Endy Elementary is Jennifer Grismer. Ms. Grismer has been a teacher assistant in the severe and profound Exceptional Children's Classroom for the last six years. She is a crucial part of Endy and is respected by her peers. Ms. Grismer is always on the move and filling holes wherever needed. She has a passion for the classroom and truly cares about all students. She works to meet students' physical, mental, and emotional needs in order to provide the best environment possible, in the classroom and on the bus ride home. Congratulations to all of these employees, and thank you again for your dedication to Stanley County Schools.
If our National Board teachers, if you could come up as well, and I know that our board certainly wants to applaud you as well as to shake your hands. Board members, I'm going to give you a five-minute break after this as well. But the Endy crowd, can we, one more time, when we get these other four people up here, can you just scream and holler for all of them? I'd like to call the board back into open session after a short recess. We enjoyed those recognitions immensely, and we thank them for all that they do and congratulate them. Next on the agenda is public comments. In accordance with Policy 2310, public participation at board meetings each month, part of at least one regularly scheduled meeting, will be set aside for citizens to address the board through public comment. Each speaker will receive three minutes to present comments. However, the public comment session will not exceed 15 minutes total, except by majority vote of the board. I have two speakers signed up tonight. First of all, Ms. Kendra Furlough. Thank you for being here.
Thank you. All right, hello. Disclaimer, what I'm about to say will probably make you uncomfortable. What comes to mind when I say porch monkey, the N-word, where black kids don't have dads? Does the 1950s come to mind when ignorance was second nature to some? Sadly, this happened in 2023. Or what about when you hear, "It's no use in learning how to pronounce your name because you'll just be a number later," or being accused of being stoned after your medication has changed and you made the teachers aware? And then the response is, "Oh, I didn't realize your family was drug-free." Or being told that you invited someone to call you the N-word. It sounds absurd, right? How does it feel knowing these words came from teachers and administration? My name is Kendra Furlough, and my son attends South Stanley High School. For six years of his life, he has been called every racial slur you can possibly think of by one student. His father and myself have emailed administration, called the school, stopped by to talk about this behavior. We were always told, "We'll handle it." When asked what they did, they would say, "Oh, we had a discussion," or "Kerry and my son just needs to stay away from the child." After six years, it finally boiled over into a physical altercation last week. Kerry was repeatedly called the N-word and other slurs. I called the school on Monday, on Tuesday, to talk to the principal about the incident. A little background about the incident. The boys were in the weight room lifting, and all the boys told each other to make one another mad enough to max out, say something to hype them. say something to hype them up. The other student said things like, you're weak, my little sister can lift better than you, my mom lifts more. This one student called my son the N-word. When I called the school, the assistant principal talked to Kirian, and she told Kirian that that was an invitation for the student to say that. After speaking with her, she informed me that she didn't in fact say that to him, and she felt like it was an invitation because he shouldn't ask to be made mad. With that being said, after being informed about the altercation that happened on Friday, I asked for copies of documentation of the times my husband and I called, emailed, and stopped by for conferences. I was told, because disciplinary actions were not necessary, it didn't need to be documented. The other student just needed to be talked to. What do I need from you all? I need incidents like this to be taken seriously. I want it to be mandatory to document these types of concerns. I need a plan of action for the student that harasses other students in this way. Time after time, it was proven that my son was in fact harassed. So why for six years was it swept under the rug? We don't condone violence, but in a 16-year-old boy's mind, enough is enough when he felt like nothing was being done. Some say the N-word is our culture, but it's not. We don't use it. Our children don't use it. It's not my culture. My son is not a troublemaker or a troubled teen. He's never gotten into a fight prior to this incident. He comes from a two-parent home that raised him to be a productive citizen and a kind human being. As far as the staff comments, it's completely unacceptable, and we have taken the proper steps to file grievances. My call to action is to listen, investigate, document, and take action. Make it more than just your email signature. Make it mandatory. Thank you for your time.
Ms. Furlough. It is not common culture, the things that you have said, and I want to, I feel like I can speak for this board in saying that what you have brought to us tonight, we will certainly ask and give directive that it just be investigated further.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Next is Ms. Morgan Perez.
In response to the statement read to me at the last board meeting, I would like to publicly state that everything that I have said and/or posted on social media is the truth. I personally believe that you, the SCS Board of Education, have been misinformed with regard to many details involving my specific situation and the mistreatment of my son. For example, Ms. Gibson told me that I withdrew my son from the dual-language class and that it was my choice as his parent to do that. I sent her a copy of the letter that I received in the mail stating that my son had been removed from the dual-language program and placed at another school. Clearly, there is a disconnect between the reality of what happened and the information that gets delivered to you all. Ms. Gibson did not reply to my email. I have not made any false claims or accusations. I have not stated anything that is not true or omitted any pertinent facts regarding my situation. I did not publicly post anything specific to my situation until June of 2022, which was six months after my situation began. I tried to get my situation correctly resolved without informing the public. I have been given several copies of the FERPA disclosure agreement. It is not necessary for me to sign the agreement to allow you to speak with me privately about my specific situation. It is not necessary for me to sign the agreement for you to speak publicly about the SCS truancy policy in general. The fact is that the SCS truancy procedure is extremely inconsistent, and there is no exclamation for why. I am not hiding behind the FERPA law. I have spoken publicly and truthfully about my situation, and I have requested responses and meetings from the BOE. In an effort to better understand how and why my situation was handled improperly, I submitted several public information requests asking for emails and documents that contain my son's name and my name. SCS is charging an hourly rate and requiring that I pay hundreds of dollars to receive information that is directly related to my son and myself. I would like to publicly ask that these charges be waived and the documents be provided without any further delay. I would like to request a meeting with you all. I have asked for this in the past, and Ms. Gibson declined on behalf of the whole board. To this day, I have not met or spoken with any member of the SCS BOE. I would like to give you all the opportunity to do the right thing and schedule a private meeting with me to discuss and resolve my situation.
Thank you, Ms. Perez. Next, board members, we have the consent agenda that you have had an opportunity to look over. If there are no corrections, may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
May I motionally approve the consent agenda?
A motion by Ms. Poblen, a second. Second by Mr. Lisk. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Opposed, no. The consent agenda has been approved. Thank you. Next, we have committee reports. I'm going to start with facilities. Ms. Poblen.
Okay. Facilities met on January 10th and again on February 2nd. We have a few upcoming meetings on the 9th and the 22nd. We met about some possible need for additional classrooms at Indy due to some capacity situations and securing an architect for that. And then we also discussed some capacity situations and possible solutions at Locust, Stanfield, East, and Central.
Thank you for that report. Finance, Mr. Lisk.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We also met on February the 2nd. It was a brief meeting ahead of our facilities committee meeting. A couple, I'm going to go over a couple items with the board that we'll have to take action on. But prior to that, we did have a brief conversation on our funding structure for the next fiscal year. The finance department, Mr. Dudley, are finalizing some preparations on that. Priorities will again be teacher supplements, classified pay scale, and some of our capital needs, among other things. But the two that I would ask the board to look at and take action on is the budget resolution. The board's already approved this budget. We've continued to add students in ADM, so we're just updating some of our estimates. This is pretty typical, and you'll see that that number right now is appropriated both on state and local funding at about 61.1 million. I would like to ask the board, if you have any questions on that, let me know. I'll do my best to answer them. Most of it is state funding, again, our local funding, and some of the federal funding. We do have ESSR funds left over that are allocated and earmarked for future needs.
Board members, I know that the finance committee met with Mr. Dudley. He went over what you have with this budget resolution for 2022, 2023. He went over every single item that is on there. So at this time, I would just ask for a motion to approve this budget resolution as it is written and presented.
I'll move to approve the budget.
Okay, it's coming out of committee, so I already have one motion. All I actually need is a second.
A second.
Okay. So I have a second then from Mr. Sworensen. Any discussion, board members? All in favor say aye. Any opposed, no. Okay, this has been approved. You have something else, Mr. Lisk?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. The second item we did was looking at a coaching supplement scale. There's two positions, really one position that we need to add, and I believe Dr. Dennis, that was North Stanley Middle School, but for JV volleyball coach. We're going to move the, or would like to move out of committee, the assistant volleyball position from a grade six to a grade five. The funny thing is, this moves right to left when you look at it, but that means they get a little bit bump in the supplement, and it will align with the JV volleyball coach supplement. The cost to the school system will be no higher than $9,400, could be less. The JV coach out of that's roughly $4,000 to $7,000, and then the cost to increase the assistant volleyball coach to a grade five will cost anywhere between $1,400 to $2,200 for the season, for the year. I'd like the board to consider a motion to approve.
Okay. You have this as well, and again, at the finance committee, this was explained very well. So, board members, it has come out of committee to have the funding for that JV volleyball and to increase this supplement as well with our assistant volleyball. What is the pleasure of, well, the board? Need a motion? Well, I have a motion because it's come out of committee, so I need a second.
Second.
Have a second from Dr. Lefler. Any questions? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed, no. Okay, we have approved this. Thank you, Mr. Lisk. Is that all you have?
Yes, ma'am.
Next, we have instructional. Mr. Sworensen.
Yes, the instructional committee met this afternoon about 5 o'clock for a presentation from Dr. Blake Lewis and Mr. Hatley about our preliminary first semester test scores. We have plenty of reasons to be cautiously optimistic about our test scores this year. They're doing a fantastic job, and I think these are going to turn out really well. We're going to let Dr. Blake Lewis actually give that presentation when the results are official. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sworensen, and for those that were here today, present at that committee. I enjoyed listening to that. Dr. Jamie Blake Lewis, Mr. Tim Hatley back there as well, Dr. Dennis. We do have some good things happening, and we are, as Mr. Sworensen said, hopefully optimistic with things. We look forward to that presentation more in March. Next is marketing and community engagement. Ms. Watson.
I have no report, but our director has been out with a knee surgery, and she's back, and I'm sure we'll have a meeting very soon.
Thank you. And we see that beautiful director back there waving. Uh-huh, just everyone back there. So we look forward to when you have that meeting, and we're glad you're doing well. Policy, Ms. Robin Whitaker.
The policy committee did meet on January 17th. We actually dealt with two policies, Policy 3620, which is extracurricular activities and student organizations, and Policy 4400, which was attendance. The committee actually approved some policy recommendations, and both of those we asked would be on the next agenda and approval for the first reading at the next board meeting, which did occur immediately following the policy committee meeting.
Okay, so thank you. And I don't think there's anything then that we are voting on tonight. Okay. Thank you. And again, thank you for those that are serving on that policy committee. Safety and security, Dr. Lefler.
We've had no meeting, but we're going to have one Friday.
Right. Looking forward to that. Thank you. Curriculum and instruction is next. Dr. Jamie Blake Lewis.
I do not have anything to share with the board this evening.
Okay. We'll be waiting for that in March. Thank you. Auxiliary services, we just basically approved. No, oh, here we come. Okay.
I'm making my way.
Oh, you got it. I see what you've got right here. So, Mr. Todd Bowers.
Thank you, Madam Chair and board. I think you have before you the bids I received on a chiller replacement at Norwood. It's not, you know, that's the thrust of the job, the big part of it, but we're doing other things. That has a remote chiller barrel. We're bringing all that out into the chiller itself that sits outside, replacing some pumps, some drives, things of that nature. But you can see here, this was something that came up and became an issue after we had already approved the capital budget last year. And so I'm coming tonight asking you for $174,500 out of capital funds to proceed with this project. Yes.
I have a question. It says something on the contract about like 48 weeks. So it takes that long to get something done?
It takes that long to get the chiller now. That's how far out supply chain is. Yeah.
So how's the chiller doing now?
It's working. We've lost half the circuit, half of it. We're running off, of course, right now, we're not in the summer months, but last summer was when we lost it. And like I say, we're operating on half capacity. And it's been doing all right. Now, we're running a little longer than we have to. Hopefully, it will make it through, you know, to the next. But I really was, you saw one on here, I think, that said 84 weeks, and I wouldn't have been surprised if everybody said that. It is just, everything you try to get now, it's just ridiculous. So 46 weeks, yeah, we're looking at close to a year.
Thank you.
Okay, we've heard the proposal from Mr. Todd Bowers to accept this, hold on, for 174,500. Let me get a motion to on the floor, and then we'll take discussion. Can I have a motion to approve?
I'll move to approve the chiller request.
Is there a second? Second. Okay, now discussion.
Mr. Bowers, with it saying 46 weeks, what is the plan if we get into the pits of summer and?
Well, we can, this winter, we had the boiler at Amont Middle School that went out. We had a leak in a section. And again, the wait time, we just now got that repaired last week. And so we brought in a temporary boiler, and we're operating it. So we can bring in, if we have to, a temporary chiller. Yep.
Mr. Bowers, these are funds we've already set aside in our capital.
Well, these have not. That's why, you know, I'm having to come, this will have to come out, because this happened after we had already approved the capital outlay budget for last year. That's when we had this failure, and so the funding was not there initially approved by the board. And so that's why I'm here tonight asking you. I'll need an additional 174,500 out of capital to cover this cost.
It'll come from his fund balance.
Yes, and we have, you know, a pretty good fund.
That was a better question.
Yeah, it'll be coming out of fund balance.
Give the capital.
Yes. Sorry if I didn't understand the question.
User error.
We're spending quite a bit of money at Norwood.
Yes, we are. And we still have some roof work to do down there. Norwood has had quite a bit of money spent over the last four years. It really has, three or four years. We've spent quite a bit of money. I agree.
And it is something I think we are all cognizant here about with the monies that we continue to spend on our buildings. Thank you for your work with this. We've had a motion, we've had a second and discussion. All in favor say aye. Any opposed, no. Okay, this has been approved.
Thank you.
Mr. Bowers. I believe next on the agenda is superintendent comments.
Thank you, Madam Chair. On February 1st, we had World Read Aloud Day, which calls attention to the importance of sharing stories, challenging participants to grab a book, find an audience, read aloud, bringing people together through stories. It will be more important than ever this year when we shared experience, the connection of reading aloud is so needed in all of our communities. The global effort is now celebrated in over 173 countries and counting. And if I'm not mistaken, Madam Chair, did you participate in that event?
I did participate.
I did participate in that event.
Did anyone else participate?
I did. Mr. Sworensen and Dr. Lefler, Ms. Watson.
We can't compete with Madam Chair Glenda.
No, no, I implore you to look on her Facebook and just kind of see.
I'm already working on my costume for next.
The treat the kids at.
Yes. It is fun, you know, it is fun to do that, and I'm sorry, I'm jumping in, but, you know, I want the public to understand too. For some of us, it's easier for. For some of us, it's easier for, for us to go out into the schools because of, you know, my being retired, not working. For some of us here, we have, they have full-time jobs, and it's not that they don't want to participate in any of this, because I am sure that they would put wigs on and do whatever to, to be out there reading. But certainly, we all, we all have fun, and hopefully, there will be times when we can all be in the schools at the, at the same time. But I just wanted to bring that out to the public, to know that some of our board members do work full-time jobs.
And I know my, I know my kids especially like it when people come in and read to them, and they want the board to know that ostriches unite, whatever that means. February fourteenth is Valentine's Day. February fifteenth, SRO Appreciation Day, very important to recognize the important roles that these individuals play in our schools as they service bridges between youth, law enforcement, community. It's not all about trying to stop the next threat. It's not all about, you know, just the, what you would think was the law enforcement side of the safety issue, but it is really about building those positive relationships with the kids and with the community and with the parents that I think goes a long way, especially even after the students get out of school. February twentieth is President's Day, and as far as the weeks go, we got February sixth to the tenth, which is our National School Counseling Week. And this highlights unique contributions of school counselors and the tremendous impact that they have in helping students achieve school success and plan for their career. One of my favorites, also, not that any of them aren't my favorite, but, you know, I was looking forward to February thirteenth to the seventeenth, excuse me, which is Love the Bus and Bus Driver Appreciation. And we highlight the important role that the yellow school bus drivers in our community show appreciation for the school bus drivers, say they transport more or our children to school every day. And I know last year, and I hope so this year, that I can get on to riding one of the buses. I think if you guys were able to participate in that, if we could do that this year, that was a very positive experience, especially for me. Because, you know, I haven't ridden a yellow bus in a long time, so I think since I was a principal, so it was nice to get back on the yellow bus. Of course, we talked about it earlier, it's the CT month, which raises awareness for the role that CT has in readying our learners for college and career success. It's also a time to help celebrate the achievements and accomplishments of our CT partners in our local, state, national level. And, you know, it's great to see all the teachers up here today, I'm glad they come in, and they are a very integral part of getting our students prepared for both work and career in college after they leave, after they leave school. And February is Black History Month, an annual celebration of the achievements by African-Americans, and a time for recognizing their role in our history. That is all I have, Madam Chair, thank you.
Thank you. I'm not sure about ostriches. Guess, guess we'll find out.
They said the kids will understand, that's all I know.
The kids will understand, okay, all right. Thank you, I think you covered about everything there for us. I'm going to start with Ms. Vicky Watson, she had our invocation, so Ms. Watson, would you like to start off with our board comments?
I just want to say thank you to all the ones that we had, got awards tonight, and our certified teachers. And last week, we had a spelling bee, and I was so proud of them, I attended that, and they had some really hard words. But all of them were great and wonderful, and the little girl that won, Stella Brown, I was really proud of her. I think she was the runner-up last year, and she won this year, so it was a really nice thing. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Watson. Dr. Lefler.
And we will be recognizing them in our next board meeting.
Thank you, Dr. Lefler.
Thanks, everybody that was here tonight, and we recognize people because we really appreciate what they do in the schools at all levels, because everybody's needed to keep our schools going. With the early reports that Dr. Blake Lewis had, it looks like that our schools are making progress on their testing as compared to the last time they were tested, so that's excellent. And I think overall, our schools are headed in the right direction.
Thank you, Dr. Lefler. Mr. Sorenson.
Thank you, Chairman Gibson. Going to do a little lesson here for the public, some things you may not know, and this is, it's going to sound a little like sour grapes, but it's not. But most people don't realize that the school board members, they basically don't have any benefits like this county commission do. They make exponentially more money than we do, which suggests to me two things. These folks up here are doing this because they're dedicated and they love our kids. Talking about the, the pay issues, we get paid about enough to cover my gas and dry cleaning bills and baby every month. Now, it may sound like I'm complaining, but I'm not, okay? It's human nature to want to be paid for your time. It's human nature, and as a conservative capitalist kind of guy, it's really important to me to get paid for my time, and it's things that I'm passionate about. I got paid two different ways this last month, that's one I'm going to share with you real quick. Spent one hour out of an all-day session with Dr. Blake Lewis, Mr. Hatley, and the systems administrators or principals. I am in awe of those people, okay? In that one hour, walking around, looking over their shoulder and aggravating a few of them, I had, I had an epiphany. We have some of the best principals in the state of North Carolina, and we owe them all a debt of gratitude. Test scores are going up, they're looking good, it's too early to say for sure, but that, that's because we have these, this, this leadership, so I got paid with that. That's compensation to me for the sleep that I lose over some of the things we have to deal with. The other thing was, briefly mentioned, was the read aloud to the fourth graders at Aquadale. I'm in my element when I'm with little kids, I guess I never passed that stage developmentally myself, it's cool, it's cool. But for that little forty-five minute session, I didn't just read to them, we interacted with them, and basically fell in love with twenty, twenty-two kids that belonged to other people, okay? These children are God's gift to us, right? And talking to them and joking with them, we talked about the Super Bowl, and we found out two of those kids were related to B.J. Hill. That is payment, that's compensation, that means a lot to me. But I left the place, and it left me sad, and it left me angry, okay? Two reasons, I could have spent the rest of the day interrupting that class and, you know, getting those kids wired up so they could go home. But secondly, a Bible verse came to, it came to my thoughts as I drove away. It's three John one four, "I have no greater joy than to hear that my children are walking in truth." That Bible verse speaks to not just the spiritual walk that we take our children on. If it's like everything else in the Bible, it's supposed to be a basically a step-by-step procedure for our life, and people are failing these kids. Our county commission is failing these children, okay? Not for me to point it out, but they're failing them miserably. I think we're eighty-fifth in the state out of a hundred and fifteen in local funding, okay? They're children, they're not numbers on a spreadsheet, they're not numbers on a ledger, they're not an ADM number. They're human beings, they're full of hope, they're full of potential, they're full of love. Those kids, they, they touch me on a level I, I can't even explain. More so, the North Carolina General Assembly for the last eleven years has been turning our children into numbers on a spreadsheet that are a burden to them as far as having, having to support and fund those. It's unacceptable. So, just a few facts I want to share with you, that the general, we're, we're underfunded locally, it's fat, I'll defend that. These folks have provided me with ammunition, which is probably the dangerous thing. The General Assembly switched and shifted lottery funding almost immediately from when it passed away from the specific purposes of capital and teachers to other line items. They played a shell game with the taxpayers of North Carolina, and it's costing us money, okay? North Carolina's, state statute says they're supposed to take a certain percentage of state's sales tax and go that specific percentage, it's supposed to go to the schools no matter what. They cut that down to like thirty percent of what it was supposed to be several years ago, and it hasn't gone back to full yet. They're not, they're not funding our, they're not funding our schools or our kids. They're not, it's all about dollars and cents, no, it's about those twenty-two kids that shared their hopes, their dreams, and their aspirations with me. The Leandro ruling, which was passed in nineteen ninety-seven, says the state of North Carolina is not properly funding rural school systems, which we're one of them, okay? Nineteen ninety-seven, it's twenty twenty-three. They continue to fight that, it's been beat, it's been beaten toward three times that you have to do this. The state taxpayers paid about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars for a study, the West Ed Study, that says, "This is what you have to do, these are the dollars you have to spend, this is how you fix it." That was four years ago. The budget surplus is several times that, and they refuse to do that. So, what may be so sad, and it turned into mad, is we are betraying these children. We are betraying the children, the county commission is betraying the children, okay? If you're, if you're happy doing eighty-fifth out of a hundred and fifteen, you're, in my opinion, you're not doing your job. If you're happy being forty-eighth, forty-ninth in the nation for cost of living adjusted or inflation-adjusted teacher pay, you're not doing your job. So, I want to take that back to the Bible verse, "I have no greater joy than to hear that my children are walking in truth." Truth is knowledge, and knowledge is truth, and we're failing the kids. And the biggest thing that aggravates me is, I came through the school system here in Stanley County, it was Almond Rock City Schools, back in the seventies, we had exponentially better funding back then. When my kids came through South Stanley in the nineties, they had better funding, they had better opportunities. It's like we're on this, we're on this, we're on a cliff or a slide, we're on a slippery slope. How far do we have to go before people in positions of power wake up? I demand our county commission get off this tack of how can we make it cheaper to put our kids to school and start doing your job. I demand Wayne Sasser and Carl Ford go up to Raleigh and get off their chairs and stand up and say, "No, we can't do this to our kids anymore, they're children." I'm at, I'm at a wonderful place where, and I don't have to worry about what goes down twenty years from now, I'll be in the ground. The society that we're building for our kids is going to fail if we don't start investing in our children. And I apologize for pontificating, but I don't apologize at all for the words.
Thank you, Mr. Sorenson. Ms. Whitaker.
I just want to say, Mr. Sorenson, I appreciate what you just said. You know, we are paid a small monetary amount, but I, I try to look at it that a payment that I think I receive is, is a blessing that I feel like we get by being able to serve, and to be able to watch our, our teachers and our students be successful. I also want to say I enjoyed the Indy crowd tonight, I appreciated the enthusiasm that they brought. I feel like that said a whole lot for their school and for the support that they show for their colleagues. You don't always see that, so it just said a whole lot about the school and about the community and about the, the staff and the leadership that they have there. So, I greatly appreciated that, maybe we'll have someone comes next to board meeting that brings that excitement with them, so.
Thank you, Ms. Whitaker. Mr. Lysk.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I'm glad I didn't have to follow Pastor Bill. This is the most passionate school board member that we have, and he really cares about the school system. I want to kind of follow up on that discussion. I had the opportunity to, along with Mr. Todd Bowers and Dr. Dennis and Mr. Terry Dudney to attend the county commissioner retreat Friday on, at Juneberry Ridge. We were given an hour to present, which I think was great that we have the opportunity to discuss funding and some of the things going on. Prior to that, we received several pages worth of questions, and our school leadership did a great job answering that, and we had an opportunity to go out there and discuss it even further. And I'd go on to say, before I sort of get to my point, that we've been making incremental progress, I think, with our county commissioners and trying to have a better communication structure between both boards. And for those that, that may or may not know, Stanley County Schools does not have any taxing authority. We are funded strictly by the federal government, the state government, and our local county commissioners. So, I, I do think that we've, we've had several committee meetings, both on finance and facilities with the, with the commissioners. We've got one coming up that Dr. Dennis is getting scheduled for March. I do believe we're going to get scheduled a full joint board meeting, so the communication structure is going very well. And I'd say at the retreat that our new commissioners, I think, were very attentive and very willing to, to, to work with the school system. One of the questions in, in, I guess, that come out of the commissioner meeting last night was, was one comment that I, I sort of just wanted to clarify here today for the public. And the comment was on Commissioner Ashudo asking at the retreat, which I was at, that did we have a plan for Baden Elementary or Oakboro Elementary to build, repair, or renovate those schools? And he says that when asked, that we do not have a plan. So, I just want to read you what was provided to Mr. Ashudo first, and then I'll kind of clarify that comment so the public can understand what both boards are actively working on and I think making progress on. The question was, "Has there been any discussions on tearing down and replacing buildings? If not, how long do you project that the main building in Norwood, Oakboro Elementary and buildings to last?" This is how it's written. The response was, "Currently, we have not had conversations about tearing down or replacing school buildings as we do not have the funding to rebuild or replace buildings." What I'd like you to take away from that is funding. Stanley County Schools is not a taxing authority, we're funded with our buildings by our local county commissioners. Last February, I've served on the facilities committee and the finance committee and on this board for about fifteen months. Last February, the county commissioners, including Mr. Ashudo, approved a pro, four projects for which we applied to the state. Every year, we're going to have to reapply for those, that's East Albemarle, that's Indy, and two Western End schools. We proceeded to meet again and have discussions, and again, our facilities with Ms. Vice Chair Carla Poplin, Dr. Lefler, and myself met with three commissioners, including Mr. Ashudo, to discuss long-range plans and funding, and how we can work together to accomplish the massive facility needs that we have. I venture to say that the buildings are great, but right now, we've got a massive teacher shortage. We've got issues on our classified pay scale, I think bus drivers, custodians, teacher assistants. I, I know that I'm going to miss some cafeteria workers, that, those are our county-paid positions. And just to give you an idea of, of how bad that priority is, we asked for that funding last April in our budget request. And, and the commissioners have a really tough job. They, you know, they have to either raise taxes, develop, pay Peter, rob Peter to pay Paul. It's a very tough job managing it the way that they do. But to give you an idea, some relativity of how it affects us here in Stanley County when we're surrounded by Union, Cabarrus, Rowan, and even Montgomery and Anson. These are just who is around us. This is a twenty-two, twenty-twenty-two report from the National, from the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners. Two things, really three things. One, they're projecting natural growth over the next twenty years. That's roughly the same growth that we've had in this county for the last twenty years. With regards to local funding per student, that means what your county is giving to the school district, divided by pretty much your number of students that you have. Right now, we've got Cabarrus that funds locally at seventy-seven percent higher than we do. Union County, which has a three-cent lower tax rate than Stanley County, so they're a low-tax county, they fund at sixty-seven percent higher per student than we do. Rowan County, or Rowan Salisbury, funds at sixty-two percent higher than we do. Even Montgomery County, which I believe is tier one, funds at sixty-six percent higher than we do. Anson County funds at forty percent higher than we do. This makes it very difficult on our local leadership to hire and retain when the funding structure is the way that it is. And again, we're working with the county commissioners, I think we have a great set of, of, of commissioner board that, that the communication is happening, and I believe that we're going to find solutions for the taxpayers to, within their best interest. To further that, and Madam Chair, I'm trying to speed it up here, I'm going to review what our teacher supplements are in the same manner with our surrounding counties. These are folks, if you got to think, if you live on the northern end, it's easy for you to pop to Cabarrus County, it's easy for you to pop to Rowan County. If you're on the, the southern end, you can pop over to, to Anson County. If you're on the western end, where I live, it's real easy, I'm two miles from the Union border, I'm right there on the Cabarrus border. You know, if you really wanted to drive to Mecklenburg, they got all sorts of money, but I'm not going to reference them here. But just on teacher salary supplements, and, and, and so that I can make sure you're not confused to public, teachers are state-paid. There is an allotment formula, and sometimes we have to, because of the unfunded mandates, pay for these teachers on the local level. But what districts tend to do is even with state-paid teachers, is they provide a supplement. So, it's just extra pay every month for the year. month for the year that helps to recruit and retain teachers. As you know, education and, and folks and students just aren't entering that as much as they used to in college, and it's very, very difficult to find top talent and retain that talent. Again, Cabarrus County funds at a hundred and four percent higher than we do. That's more than double teachers can get in a supplement. Union County at ninety-one percent higher than we do. Rowan County at twenty-five percent higher. Montgomery County at twenty-two percent higher. And Anson, in this case, is lower by about half. But what I want to say there, and, and really further add on to that, you may or may not remember, but the finance committee and then this board approved in this new budget year, so in the fiscal year that we are right now, to increase the teacher supplements to a five percent on a percentage pay. So that gave them an increase from where they are at, and every time the state gives them an increase, it goes up as well. But that's what makes it very difficult when we can't get bus drivers to drive the routes in the mornings. That's what makes it very difficult when we have four traditional high schools. The curriculum is offered across the county for every student. We don't have drivers to bus them around the county. So what does that mean? That means that lower-income folks that cannot afford their own vehicle to get from one place to the next don't have those curriculum opportunities. So the direct result of deficient funding at a local level directly impacts our lower-income students and curriculum opportunities across the county. On top of, even if you've got money, we may not have a teacher that can teach that curriculum. So I say all of that, that out of the November meeting, and thank you for your patience here, is out of the, okay, so out of the commissioner, joint commissioner meeting in November, this committee of myself, Vice Chair Carla Poplin and Dr. Lefler, and Dr. Dennis met with the county management commissioners, and they requested that we do a demographic study to really understand our population trends. Because it's really hard to, with multi-millions of dollars of facility needs, several million dollars of teacher supplement needs recurring, about another million dollars in recurring funding for the classified pay scale. We really, in order to use, you know, to be a fiduciary for our taxpayers, and to also access state money for facility needs, to use our taxpayer dollars wisely, they requested we get a demographic study, which this board, in our December work session, approved. I think you read about it maybe in the Stanley News and Press, and that will be ready sometime in June. But this board has scheduled work sessions. We have another one coming up. We have commissioner meetings coming up. I believe that at some point very soon, we're gonna have public input. So we're working very diligently in an open communicative style that we can have commissioner board support, we can have public support, that we make sure we use your money wisely and do the right thing for our county. So I just thought that that provided a little bit more context to the statement that this school board doesn't have a facilities plan, that we don't have a funding plan. Okay, and thank you very much. I'm full of flaws here. But Montgomery County is a Tier Two. So we are a Tier Two. The state ranks these on tiers, basically of how wealthy or poor you are. So they're still significantly higher in funding than we are in, in equal economic size as far as the schools go. I'm gonna finish on this, because I know you're tired of listening to me. And I'm, I'm sure Mr. Graves is laughing right now, and I'll probably have to call him. I'm not taking his place, I can assure you. But I do think our county manager is working hard. I think he's listening. I do think we have a great set of county commissioners that we talk to regularly, that want the best for this county. They wanna see great schools. They wanna see buildings, and so much so that they've put out a, a survey that I would ask the public to go take. I would ask you to visit stanleycountynorthcarolina.gov. That's stanleycountynorthcarolina.gov. Scroll to the bottom of the page, and on the left-hand side, click the link. It's a survey as they prepare their budget needs for the upcoming fiscal year beginning July the first, that you, as a taxpayer and voter, have the opportunity to prioritize how you want them to spend the money. That's, that's safety, such as the fine officers we, we have sitting out here. That's some of our social services needs, our, our school systems. There's a, a very long list that these commissioners have to fund in, in this county. But if you will go there and visit stanleycountynorthcarolina.gov, your support for the school system, or at least your input, whether you support the schools or not, would be greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for all that valuable information. Very much so. Ms. Poplin.
I get to follow Mr. Sworrenson and Mr. Lysk. So there, there were a lot of very important comments that both of these gentlemen have made tonight. I would like to just kind of follow up a little bit on what Mr. Sworrenson was talking about. Sitting in the instructional meeting tonight, just as an observer, but seeing the growth that our staff has put in, just in the beginning of this year, and we're not all the way to March yet, I am so proud of our teachers and our, everybody in that building helps to make that growth. And I just want them to know that we see those numbers, and we're appreciative of those, and we're excited to see where those are going. Because that growth, to me, that, that's heartwarming to me, and that, that's how I get paid. So I have that, and just to ditto a lot of what Mr. Lysk was saying, I do feel like we have a lot of facility needs coming up, but we have some plans in place, and the meetings with the commissioners and our local municipalities, and public to kind of get some input, and I'm looking forward to that. And to just thank our public speakers tonight. Appreciate those folks coming out and speaking with us and all the recognitions. And just to take a little second, you know, Bill was talking about how, you know, he gets paid back. I have a boss that's very accepting of our schools and supportive of our schools, and so each week I get to go and do the Lunch Buddy program, and I feel like that's how I get paid. I get to sit there with my kids and eat lunch, and I'm just love on them and mentor them. And if you have a minute to do that, I highly encourage it. It takes about fifteen minutes out of your day. So that's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. I echo everything that everyone has said. So important and valuable. I too enjoyed reading with the kids, and I did enjoy dressing as a penguin with spiked hair. I think what I enjoyed most was a comment from a child at Richfield after I was, well, while I was kind of introducing myself, where I said, I've, I've been teaching like thirty-two years. And the child, I could tell, was like really trying to puzzle, you know, figure out thirty-two years in his head, looking at me. And then I said, my husband taught here twenty-five years, and even taught and coached your teacher, Ms. Fur. Well, that gave him even more adding and subtracting or whatever he was trying to do in his head. He finally looked at me, and he said, did you go to school? And I said, yes, I did. And he said, no, did you go to a real school? And I said, yes, I went to a real school. He said, one of those real schools, like, you went every day, like, every day you went to that school? And I was, and he was like, and I said, yes. He was like, wow, wow. And I don't know, the first thing that came to my mind was Little House on the Prairie. I thought, well, I guess this child is trying to figure out how I went to school in Little House on the Prairie. Well, I don't know. They didn't have penguins on Little House on the Prairie, but anyway. I just, again, echoing everything, that World Read Loud Day, I have to give a shout-out to Alyssa Proventure, I believe is her name, the media specialist at Aquadale, who, you know, she sent us these sign-up genius sheets or whatever. And I think after it's over, I read a comment she had made on Facebook about, my heart's happy, my heart's happy today. And it is. I'm sure her heart was happy to see the, the joy that not only we had as reading, but the joy of, of those children. She worked hard at that. And just listening to the instructional committee, you know, I, I want to shout out all the time to our teachers, our staff, our administration, our office staff, our students, you know, families. I think we are at a point, and I'm hoping everyone is seeing it, I think we are at a point that we all know our children and our teachers, our staff, they deserve the best. And that best is in facilities. That best is in instructional opportunities. That best is that for any child, no matter what side of the county they attend school, where they attend, they have those opportunities. So when people sometimes want to say, you know, I don't want this board to kick the can down the road like in the past, well, we're not trying to do that. We are truly trying to work hard, again, work hard, as you said, with our county commissioners, our local councils, to hear people, because truly in my heart, our teachers and our students and our families, they deserve the best. I have something, board members, that I told Ms. Lindsay Merritt at Stanfield that I would give to you at the board meeting. So the students at Stanfield, all the Wildcats, everybody that's a Wildcat, student, teacher, staff, they all took one board member, and they made us these cards for National School Board Appreciation Month. Now mine was made by kindergartners. So I'm going, I'm, I'm going to give these out to you, but I promise you, when you read them, your heart's going to melt. So thank you from all the board members. Thank you from the bottom of our hearts to Ms. Lindsay Merritt at Stanfield and all the staff and those precious children, the Stanfield Wildcats. Thank you. All we needed was that Indy crowd to do those squilly things and jump and shout. And I, I think Dr. Dennis, we need to, you need to provide the board with some of those squilly, squilly things or whatever. I like to sometimes just go into the school, you know, and go walking down the hall, just doing those things, just to shout and tell all the administration and teachers and students how proud, how proud we are of them. I'm proud of you, board members. Thank you for, you're working so hard and on all your committees, and we have a big job ahead of us, and I, I thank each and every one of you for your service. The date and time for our next regularly-scheduled board meeting is Tuesday, March seventh, 2023, in the Gene McIntyre Room, beginning at six fifteen. I don't believe we need to go back into closed session. So I'm going to turn over Personnel, Administration, and Student Services to you, Ms. Wood.
Good evening. I'd like to draw your attention to the updated personnel agenda that was at your seats. Additions were added in red. Section one requires no action. Section two, with the updates, does require action. So we'd like to entertain a vote at this time.
May I have a motion to approve section two of the personnel agenda that, with the updates?
I make a motion we approve section two of the personnel agenda with the update.
Have a second? Second by Ms. Watson. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, no. Okay, section two has been approved. Thank you, Ms. Wood.
Thank you.
There's no further discussion of anything. There may be some dates possibly coming out, board members. I know it's Dr. Lysk, Ms., I'm sorry, Mr. Lysk. Okay, just strike that. Mr. Lysk, Ms. Poplin, others of you. I know that Dr. Dennis is working on some dates for the board. I think Hope may be sending out some things. There's also something that you may be interested in, which is a spring virtual fall conference. Make sure you take a look at that. Hope sent that out, I believe, last Friday, and I know that I'm gonna take part in that. So pay close attention to dates. That will be coming your way. I need a motion to adjourn. Motion by Ms. Whitaker, a second. Second by Ms. Poplin. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, no. We are adjourned.